Thank you. Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Concord Planning Board on Tuesday, September 26, 2023 at 7:00 PM. The Planning Board is convening this hybrid meeting by video conference using the Zoom application and is also in person at 141 Kaiser Road. This meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. Through the remainder of the calendar year, the Planning Board intends to alternate between hybrid and virtual meetings. The details of this are noted on the Planning Board page on the town's website. I'd like to welcome everyone attending this meeting here and on Zoom and take attendance of members and staff. Rob Almeida.
Here.
Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Sue Felshen.
Here.
Abby Flanagan.
Here.
And myself, Linda Miller, present. Mark Gettings is not here tonight. Town Planner Elizabeth Hughes is also here. I'll briefly review our meeting procedures. Each vote will be conducted by roll call if we or any members are attending remotely. There will be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating remotely wishing to make a statement during a public participation period should use the Zoom raised hand function or star nine on a phone and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use star six from a phone and then speak. Participants in person don't have to approach a microphone to speak tonight. They will be carried from the microphone on the table. When you speak, please address the chair, identify yourself by name, address, and any relevant affiliations, and speak clearly for the meeting record. Comments during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances such as for those with disabilities, and are requested to be respectful. Answers to questions unless very brief and fact-based will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. The Board welcomes written comments at any time instead of or in addition to those made during public participation. Written materials for this meeting are posted on the Planning Board section of the town's website. We have two minutes before our first agenda item.
Prove your minutes.
Ah, so we have minutes from June 20, 2023. Could, are there any comments from any Planning Board members on those minutes? Then could I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 20, 23?
A motion to approve the minutes for June 6 of 2023? I mean, just sorry, June 20 of 2023, apologize.
Could I have a second?
Second.
See, I was gonna say all, all those in favor, but I'll have to read our names again. Rob Almeida.
Yes.
Andrew Boardman.
Yes.
Sue Felshen.
Aye.
Abby Flanagan.
Aye.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. Okay. Well, I think we can go to the first agenda item. That is a public, public hearing on the petition of property owners of Squaw-Satcham Trail to change the private road name from Squaw-Satcham Trail to Satcham Trail. Are there any property owners or representatives here to present the petition?
Yes, hi. Joel Patterson, this is my wife, Jamie Patterson. We live at 70 Squaw-Satcham Trail here in Concord. And if it's okay, we'll, we'll, we can make a little brief presentation if that's okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
So, like I said, we're at Squaw-Satcham Trail, and it's a private road right off Nashata Hill with five, five homes on it. We're at the, at the end of the road, Squaw-Satcham Trail, if you are unfamiliar with it. At the end of the paved road, it actually continues on as a nature trail of the exact same name, which is owned by the Concord Land Trust. So we went on this journey really at the beginning with the Department of Interior when they made the decision to remove the word "Squaw" from all federal lands. Now, many states have made these removals as well, including Massachusetts, where the trustees have already made these changes to all their, the names as, as have several of the towns, and the most recent being Great Barrington. We began our discussions for the potential name change with our trail neighbors, the Concord Land Trust. And from there, we sought guidance and research from the Concord Historical Commission, which included discussions with the local Concordian tribal historians. We then took a deep dive of history by visiting the Concord Archives and the special collections of the public library. The curator was a wealth of knowledge as we examined historic maps and town records. From this research, we learned that William Wheeler once owned all the land, basically owned all the land from Elm Street essentially to the Concord River. And he personally named our road in the early 1900s. We found Wheeler had formed it as a private road and which has remained ever since. We shared our research with the Concord Land Trust, and their board has agreed to rename their nature trail to our proposed name, Satcham Trail. As we would like this to be a joint effort, they're standing by and will look into changing their maps. We shared this research with their Concord Historical Commission, and they voted unanimously to support this name change and have submitted to us a letter of support on our behalf. So we, now, we want to thank the Planning Board for the consideration of our petition and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. That was very interesting and very concise. Appreciate that. Are there any questions from Planning Board members? I have one question, and, and that is, will you be changing, changing the signage on the road?
Yes.
And will you be having the Historical Commission or anyone review that signage?
It is my understanding they already have.
Okay, great.
And like I said, the Concord Land Trust is literally the same trail name. They've already approved with their board to change it to Satcham Trail as well. So this again was a joint effort, the five land, the five homeowners and the larger entity, which is the Land Trust, which is, their trail is much longer than ours, but it is one trail.
Okay, thank you. If no other questions, are there any questions or comments from the public? If you'd like to comment?
So I did want to let the board know that the Historical Commission did send a letter to the board noting their full unanimous support for the change in the name. Additionally, the Fire Department reviews all roadway names, and they did not have any issues with the change in the name either. As far as the street sign, there are required standards through the Public Works Department for street signs. So the street sign would have to be meet their standards and then say below it, you know, private way. So that's, but that's something that would happen, you know, between the property owners and Public Works, but, so there's no issues with the name change.
Thank you very much. So any comments or questions from the public? Please identify yourself.
Joe Palumbo. I live at 90 Black Horse Place in Concord. I work as a public interpreter in town and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Commission, and I work with Concord 250. And I just wanted to add my voice into great respect and hard work that your community did to get together and ask for this request. As you know, it's something that's going on across the country, and it's part of the work we're trying to do here in Concord, specifically this year about honoring Black and Indigenous people of color, both in our community and those we wish to welcome to our community. And when towns do simple things like this that aren't really that simple, that's a signal to the wider, our wider state that the 15 Indigenous, 15,000 Indigenous residents of our state are welcomed here, and we realize that a street that says S-Satcham is offensive, and it's a name that should not be used. And I know from your research, you realize for many Indigenous, it's as difficult as the N-word is in many communities. So that this, that this is coming down is very respectful to them, and I just thank you so much for all the hard work and the time and patience you put into getting this done. And there's more work ahead. We're working to support what you have done, working now about there are three very offensive signs about Indigenous history that exist in our town that were put in 1930. That was a very similar era to when your street was named, when there was a lot of misunderstanding about our Indigenous history. So we'll be looking for your support as we work to get those signs down in the next few months, we hope as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments on Zoom? If not, then could I hear a motion to change the name of the private road, Squaw-Satcham Trail, to Satcham Trail and authorize the Chair, Vice Chair, or Town Planner to sign such notice to be recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of D and to be submitted to the appropriate agencies?
I so move.
Thank you, and a second?
A second.
Okay. You can choose Elizabeth.
Rob slightly beat out Andrew.
Okay. And we'll take a vote. Rob Almeida.
Yes.
Andrew Boardman.
Yes.
Sue Felshen.
Aye.
Abby Flanagan.
Aye.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. Thank you so much for coming in with your request.
Thank you.
Very good.
Very good. All right. Now we will move on to administrative business, and if there are people who do not have as much an interest in that, I perfectly understand, but thank you for coming this evening. Okay, so first we will have any public comment now that we've lost some of our public. General public comment is limited to 15 minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to any one speaker. General public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to take the opportunity to comment, either in the room or on Zoom? If not, then we will go to reviewing the administrative policy and procedure number 10. Town Board Committee and Task Force Appointment Policy Amendment Discussion. So the Select Board has requested that we review this APP number 10. And I am hoping that we can provide comments, if any, tonight to Elizabeth, who will be able to draft a letter to the Select Board with our comments and move forward. I would say that any grammatical spelling style type corrections, just please forward directly to Elizabeth. I don't think we need to go through that as a group. And I thought perhaps we could just go through this page by page and see if anyone has comments on any of the pages. Are there any comments anyone has on page one?
Uh, yes, is that page one? Oh, no, page one is the cover. Never mind.
That's okay. Page two.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Okay, under Section Two, Powers and Duties, in the third, which is the last paragraph, second to last line, I notice it says, "positions on all issues consistent with the views of the Select Board and Town Manager." And I thought that since they're thinking of doing something about this, it could, this could be clarified a little bit more as to whether it means people must align themselves with the views of the Select Board and Town Manager and not think and speak for themselves, or if it, what, I guess what I mean, what do they mean by views? If they mean voted positions, that would be one thing, but it's a little unclear to say simply views. And also, even if it's voted positions, I wonder if that's really what the town wants, that all committees shall do that. Quite possibly, but it occurred to me as a question to ask.
I think that's a good suggestion. Are you?
Okay, and then under Section Three, first paragraph, last line, balance of the current year. It is not clear what is meant by current. It probably means current committee-serving year, which expires at the end of the month in which town meeting occurs, or May 31st, unless there's a public emergency, but it doesn't say. So that could use clarification. And in the following paragraph, except in unusual circumstances, I'm kind of okay with unusual being vague, but boy, that's really vague. It, anybody could take that to mean anything, so I thought it was worth bringing to their attention. And the word yearly here, that is in fact the standard, but I wondered, there have been some other, I can remember a time when the Planning Board, for example, split the chairship a year and a half and a year and a half between two people, and does that qualify as unusual circumstances? I don't know. These are just some thoughts that occurred to me.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, can you scroll down a little bit more to the bottom of this page? Whoops, the bottom of page two? I was just wondering if there was anything else on that page. There was not, no. Okay, I have no further comments on page two.
Okay. Does anyone have a comment on page three?
Uh. I think your pages got kind of.
Messed up. Word on a Mac is not always friendly and polite, but I'm just looking to see, did I have any comments on what is supposed to be page three?
No, just edits. Your, your next comment isn't until, I think, section five.
Five?
Term, term of office.
Oh. Wait. Section five, five, six, six. Isn't that section seven?
Oh, is that seven? Yeah.
There are actually some numbering problems, but since those are editing issues, I'm not going to be discussing them tonight. Okay, so.
Term of office, okay. Appointment policies and procedures, term of office.
Yes. Right, so item nine. I wanted to, I was wondering, given how much trouble the town has finding volunteers, whether we might consider allowing people to serve more than two terms or one for if greater than three years, such as a planning board, but only if there was a cooling-off period of sufficient length. And off the top of my head, it seemed like however long your term or terms had been, that would be a pretty good cooling-off period. So if you served one term of three years, you would have to cool off for a year, a term of three years. And if you turn, served two terms of three years, so six years, you'd have to cool off for six years before you could return. That would be one possibility, and then you could either return and start over from scratch, or maybe you could return only one time and then forget it. That's enough. No rotating over and over and over. And then I had some questions that had to do with partial terms. Ah, wait a second. Under item nine, still, it says, "shall be limited to two full consecutive terms." So I have heard repeatedly that our standard in Concord is you can serve two full terms of three years, period, and never further terms, or the Planning Board one of five years. But that's not what APP 10 says. So if, if we're just going by a town tradition of two consecutive, of two terms, period, then perhaps it should be spelled out more clearly in APP 10, or, or perhaps we're comfortable with APP 10 as written, but it still seems a little inconsistent to have the tradition be different from what is written when we wrote it ourselves and can change it if we want. Let's see, and then, under item 11, "a partial term to fill a vacancy shall not be considered to be a full term." Well, what about other partial terms? What if you get on a committee, experience some life circumstance, can't fill out your term, you resign? Does that count as a full term? Does that count as a partial term? That doesn't count toward being full terms that you can't repeat? I think this should be spelled out better in APP 10. Right, yes, just to be clear. And then in item 13, I thought it, I found this very confusing because I know of the pandemic emergency, that turns out to be covered later, but there's no cross-reference, but that's not a real comment. That's just being a little bit more clear. Then if we go to the next page.
Could we wait? I had something on.
Oh, yes.
16. I don't know if that's still the same 16. Each committee member shall hold office. So this, I was requesting that it might be reviewed because otherwise we would have Nathan Bosdett here tonight, and we don't have, always have a successor, and the question is, is that fair to an individual who has served a full term that they can't leave the committee until their vacancy has been appointed with a qualified individual? And I also thought that, you know, that might slow down people's ability to go onto other committees, such if they are held back.
Say that the person can resign.
Yeah, they couldn't just walk away.
Yeah.
Submit their resignation. You can try to force them on, but they would decide, say, hey, I'm done.
Yeah. Resigning. I'm resigning. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
But it might let Nathan stay if he wanted to.
No, but he might feel an obligation, I guess. I guess he just could resign. That's fair.
I actually felt a little bit the opposite way about this, that if anything, I've heard people, I've heard people say, well, their term of office is up, they have to leave the committee, rather than, I, I think it should be more clear that when your term is off, of office is up, you are of course free to leave the committee by resignation or by appointment of a successor, but if you want to serve out until a successor can be found, it should be more clear that you're free to do so, if that is in fact the policy that we want.
I mean, how, again, I'm, this is my first term, first year, but how, how do we go recruiting for future members when we know that someone's done with their five-year term, they're in their four, you know, four and a half years? You got six months to try to fill that vacancy. How do we do that? How has that been done?
It's constant.
Yeah, I know, I get that. I know it's a loaded question, but it's.
It's, it's, it's constant. I mean, each, you know, the, the Chair and Mary Hartman's our Select Board liaison, and, you know, just they go out and talk to people and it's like, oh, we, you know, we just had this workshop, that person, you know, seemed, you know, really interested in the whole thing, and so cold call. You know, at every function, it's a, you know, it's, hey, you know, your, your civic duty, you know, these are, you know, these are people that are, you know, managing the community and making decisions, and, you know, everybody should, you know, step up, do their part, and, you know, you submitted a green card, and, but it's, you know, it's constant. We've, we now have had a vacant position for over a year from a resignation.
Also, the Board of Select Board includes a list of open positions in every agenda, and it gets posted in various places. It's just hard.
So, so I think, you know, I'm an example of 16. I think what the intent behind it was, was when I served on Historic District Commission, my term was up, we had somebody in the pipeline, but it was like two or three Select Board meetings out. There was something on the agenda that without my participation, they wouldn't have quorum for, and so rather than fill out all of this paper, go through all this rigmarole, it was like, can you just stay through an extra meeting? You know, an extra one or two meetings, you know, we'll consider your term should be done January 1st, we'll do it February 1st, so that we don't kind of mess up, you know, the order of business that day. So I think that's really the intent behind it, is it's just to give a little bit of flexibility when these, the stars may not perfectly align, and because it says that people can, you know, obviously resign, but it just gives the flexibility that if, you know, everything doesn't fall exactly into place, you, you don't have to kind of throw your agenda out the window for an extended period of time while you wait for somebody to, you know, there, go up before the Select Board and all the rest of it. So I, I don't, I don't have an issue with, with 16 as, as written.
Are we moving on to the next page? Did sound die?
Yeah, we, we can't hear you in the room.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I, I can hear, I can hear Sue and Andrew, but I cannot hear what's happening.
And they nodded, so they can hear us.
Okay.
Don't hurt, don't talk bad about them.
Well, this is fun. We can just talk over them now.
So moved.
Apparently you didn't get a second unless someone in the room seconded it.
Can you hear us now?
Oh, yes, lovely. Hooray.
All right.
Don't touch anything. Don't jiggle the table. Okay, moving on.
The new, the new tech supervisor. Okay. Moving on, Sue, did you have another comment in that section?
I did, well, under B, appointments for additional terms, I had a minor comment, which is that, what about the case where one is desperately seeking a new member and can't find one? Is there, would there be any provision then for reappointing someone to an additional extraordinary term, or would that be better covered under item 16, namely, you can stay on until you choose to resign until someone else is found? Probably better to handle it under 16, but APP 10 is not clear about that. And the reason I say probably better to handle it under item 16 is that then when, as soon as a new person is found, they can replace the person who's been, who's allowed themselves to be held over, which is more in keeping with the APP 10, I think. And then I had another comment on this page, which was the word rare. Below items one, two, and three, the last paragraph says, "is it intended that reappointments under this section shall be rare?" That's fine, but not very clear. If the town went to something about cooling-off period, then rather than saying rare here, it should say rare, but cross-reference whatever item about reappointment after a cooling-off period. Ah, let's see. Item, no, that's just wordsmithing, never mind. Let's see.
Anything else on page five, is there?
Not for me. I have nothing until item G.
Okay, let's go to G, unless there's anyone else? Residency?
Right, on line four, it says relatively rare. Well, earlier it said in a different item, it said something about rare, and now it says relatively rare. So now I find myself wondering what the difference between rare and relatively rare is and relative to what? So I just thought that could use some clarification.
Okay, we're getting a little close to wordsmithing there, but that's okay.
But.
That is, though, that.
It's not? Okay, relatively rare.
Well, it implies there's a distinction because you're not using the same term. So relatively rare is less rare than rare.
Yeah, that, and that's why I think it's weird. Okay, and now I have nothing. Yeah, that. And that's why I think it's weird. Okay. And now I have nothing until the last.
Okay, I have something on H, role of committee and appointments. So we, and maybe I've read this wrong, but we had, um, someone in our subcommittee, uh, the West Concord Advisory Committee come to us, um, where we did vote with respect to their candidacy, but their, um, appointing authority was the select board. So it seems to me that they might want to consider in the role of appointments, something about subcommittee and, and appointments to subcommittees.
Well, in what sense? To be more clear about who the appointing authority is or to make more clear?
Well, it doesn't say anything about, um, uh, the role of committee and appointments if there's a subcommittee. It doesn't, there's no consideration of who is the appointing authority and what the process is. And we, we did find it a little confusing uh, going through the process, uh, and, and defaulted to asking the clerk, which was what we did, but it's, doesn't look like APP ten actually deals with this issue and perhaps it should.
Okay, I see your point. We end, the word we got was that we recommend to our appointing authority whether or not to um, uh, appoint the can, they should appoint the candidate, but it, you're right. Uh, now that you mentioned it, it would be good to spell that out.
Any additional comments, Sue or anyone else on the board?
Wait, actually, I take it back. I had, I said I had a further comment, but I don't. I'm done.
Okay. Um. Then if there are no additional comments, are there any comments from, uh, members of the public? Yes, um, Mary?
Thank you for that. That was very helpful, really. Um, but I do have something that I'd like to feel, I'd like to hear what the entire board thinks about. Under powers and duties, section two, and Sue mentioned this and it was, it's talking about the degree of autonomy for a board or a committee, however, it is in the best interest of the town, that these committees be guided by the general policies promulgated by the select board to the extent possible. So I'd like to just hear your thoughts about, is that sufficient? Or, um, do you want more autonomy or more guidance from the select board? Or are you happy with the way this is written?
May I have a comment? I think there are committees and different, and, and committees. So some committees have other authorities that they have to consider, um, that maybe the s- state has requirements. So um, perhaps you need some sort of order of, of that or distinction of that, but it, that to me would be a it is a little confusing about what we, we, you know, have certain requirements that the s- state sets for us. A- and where does the select board? You know, how, because I don't want to leave it up to the committee to say, well, I can't go against what the select board is uh, encouraging us to do if the state and your requirements say otherwise. So I, I think that there needs to be something respecting that. Um, difference of, uh, authority i- in that.
Like here's an, here's an example. Suppose the select board, which I cannot imagine, were to promulgate a policy that the town of Concord should not apply with the M I, MBTA Communities Act because some unimaginable reason. Then I don't think it, the planning board should be then required to go along with that view when it's state law that we follow it. So, um, I throw that up as an example because this would never come up as a conflict, but it proves that it's possible for there to be a conflict.
Well, it's more that some commissions, like I guess the Historic District Commission are authorized by state.
Yes.
Um, statute. And so they, they have to abide by that. So the select board couldn't put them in a compromising position in any way with the state having been essentially their, their authority. So it versus, I mean, I think you could always have a difference of opinion between the select board and the planning board or any other board on a, a particular policy or issue. So that, that would just be a difference of opinion and I, I think we all agreed that we could differ, but, you know, but, but not, not when there's a statute that you would, would be involved.
And that's why I was hoping it could be clarified more. Uh, and now that I think of it, there have been numerous cases or at least quite a few in which the select board has voted differently on a recommendation on a town meeting article. Does, would this mean that everybody had to fall in line with how the select board voted? I don't think that that would be reasonable for the town. I do think it's reasonable to say something about being, uh, 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 not defying the will of the select board and town manager. I think it needs to be stated differently. May I ask you a question, Mary?
Sure.
Wh- what is, so this agenda item has come up for us. What is it that the town, what has raised this issue with the town? Does the select board find that there are problems with APP ten that have caused you to look at it right now? Or has it simply come around again for its, uh, periodic review? Uh, do you have any guidance for us on what kind of feedback you wanted anyhow?
Well, I think we talked about it, that it's getting harder and harder to find people. Wondering if people are interested in relaxing some of the requirements. Um, that, that was one thing. Um, the other thing is that we've got a lot of boards that have, um, and committees that have members that have, you know, gone beyond their term and it's supposed to be rare or relatively rare, but it's becoming less rare. Uh, so we want to think about that. Um, we've got some other ideas. Some people are thinking maybe we should relax the residency requirement. So we're responding to the fact that it's getting harder and harder to, um, to get people on, on committees. And that's, I think that was the impetus for this review.
Okay, thank you. That's very clarifying. I will note that, um, a town committee, um, in uh, over the, in the past year was interested in changing its policies to allow, um, people more easily to stay on or come back for extended terms. And that seemed like too relaxed a way of staying on for too long and coming back too quickly, in my personal opinion. But I could certainly see some room for opening things up to some degree.
So could I just raise the issue of that? You know, I understand the desire to make some of these policy changes about appointments and terms and all that, but to be totally frank, I, I, I don't think that's a huge roadblock to people's participation. Um, sorry, my dogs are wrestling in my office. If you hear strange noises in the background, um, but you know, a huge piece of this is that these meetings happen at seven PM. And if you'll notice, there aren't a lot of commission members or board members across town that are like me, that have young kids. Is because these meetings are scheduled smack dab in the middle of dinner and bedtime and act, you know, evening activities and all the rest. And if the town wants to think creatively about how to encourage more participation, it may not be asking non-residents to commit to seven PM meetings. Maybe we need to be more creative about when these meetings happen. Um, so that's just my kind of two cents from a less technical perspective in terms of the policy and a broader perspective of, of are we limiting our participation just simply based on how we schedule these? Um, I do think that the initial, back to the technical guidelines, the initial section that Sue commented on, um, I don't, I don't, my split screen is not working. Um, but where it's talking about, um, that, you know, the board should represent the views of the select board and town manager. The, the specific language puppies, um, in that section that it's referencing is, is when the, when the board is representing the town to another state, local or regulatory agency. And in that instance, I think it makes sense if you're representing the town to be aligned with the broader position of the town as opposed to, do you see that distinction in there? It's, it's not clearly written. But looking at that legally, it's, it's really when the board is representing to another state, local or regulatory authority. So I think there's.
Okay, I see your point.
Yeah, you see that. Like, I think it's just not well, it's not well-written, but I don't think, I think if you're looking at it from that lens, then the it's making, makes sense.
You're right. It does make sense. And I think then that it's really just a language issue that that needs to be more clear because I failed to catch that. And thanks for pointing it out.
Okay, any, uh, other comments from members of the public on Zoom? Okay, if not, um.
I think we have carpal tunnel here. I'm not used to this because, you know, at home I can type while you, everybody's talking. So I will, um, you know, draft, put this, uh, draft together. Um, Mary, do you know when the select board is going to be discussing this?
No, I don't.
Okay, so I have. I just, do I, do I have a little bit of time? Do I, okay. Okay, so I'll pull together a draft letter and have Linda review it and sign it.
Or maybe Sue. Uh, I'll review it and sign it. Okay. But yeah, if you have any questions.
And, or I can, I can send it to Sue and Linda. You guys can wordsmith it. Make sure I captured everything. Um, sure. All right.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, now we're going to move on to, um, potential zoning bylaws of, for town meeting uh, twenty twenty-four, and I'm going to hand this over to Elizabeth. However, um, uh, the tradition, uh, at the planning board is that each member, um, have a, um, an article that they would bring to the floor. So, um, please be thinking as Elizabeth goes through the list here of what, what you feel passionate about and would like to represent at town meeting. Or at least semi-interested. So that would be great. And, and then we'll, we'll have a little sign up and volunteering opportunity at the end.
Um, so I will, uh, share my screen. Um, and the first one is, um, just a, a quick amendment to the site plan review section. Um, eleven point eight point six and eleven point eight point seven point three. Um, and Sue can, um, correct me, but currently, um, the bylaw says uh, insure, um, I N, um, which means to insure like through all state. Um, so I think it needs, it should be ensure or is it assure? Sue? Actually, so you're allowed to use insure with an I for both meetings, but it's really preferred to use insure. There, there are several places in the zoning bylaw where we use assure or insure and in where we should be using insure. So this is perfect. Awesome. Yeah. Um, and, um, so, but the real reason for, um, the suggestion is currently, uh, the zoning bylaw says uh, that the planning board has ninety days from the date the application is filed with the town clerk. Um, and for a perfect example is one, uh, seven sixty-eight Elm Street redevelopment. Um, you know, for larger projects, um, and, uh, as um, we, you know, they come through, there, you know, they, we may have an outside consultant reviewing traffic, um, stormwater drainage, um, and that process right there takes a month. Um, by the time we have to go out for requests for quotes, um, and go through the selection process and the contract process and um, ninety days, um, is generally not sufficient for, um, uh, you know, any site plan review of, you know, a moderate size. Uh, so to be consistent, uh, the recommendation is, um, to have that be the, um, ninety days of the close of the public hearing, uh, which is consistent with, um, state law and the requirements for special permits. Any questions? Okay. One. Um, and so, uh, the, oops, no, I want to go to Sue's email. Um, Sue did provide just a couple of edits on these. Um, the second one is the floodplain conservancy district. Um. So is the, uh. Hey, it's the, there we go. I am, I am not a mouse, I am not a mousepad person. Um. Uh, this, uh, recommended change right here.
So it's not.
Whoa, we can't see it. Oh, okay. Let's try this. There. Um, so, um, this change right here is, there is only one floodplain conservancy district boundary. Um, and so this is just clarifying. Um, you know, it's a boundary. There's not multiple boundaries in the district. Um, but the real reason is this section right here. Um, some of the board members may remember from twenty twenty-one, uh, the, um, the FEMA along with the, um, state, uh, issued mandatory requirements under the National Flood Insurance Program, uh, that communities had to update their floodplain um, bylaws to include a required language. Um, that bylaw, we went through, it was an extensive, um, amendment. Uh, that bylaw then went to the NFIP state coordinator, uh, to review. And she found, um, one phrase that did not get included. Um, and, um, so I will expand on the, um, explanation a little bit, but without this one phrase, FEMA, um, may reject um, the town's floodplain bylaw and could jeopardize, um, people being able to get flood insurance under the NFIP pro- program. So, um, this is, I'm considering kind of a house housekeeping item, uh, so that the town, uh, remains, um, in compliance. Um, and people can still get flood insurance. Okay. All right. And then I think the last one I, um, so. I'm gonna, um, I'll, I'll start and then Sue and Linda can, um, the next one is, um, there are um, a, a lot of, every year, um, there is no less than eight people who review the zoning bylaw after town meeting. And we do updates to include, uh, items that have been, um, uh, approved at town meeting. Um, it is, um, just a known fact that we will miss something. Um, I, I don't know how it happens, but the, ask the town clerk, it, it doesn't matter how many people review it, something al- always gets missed. Um, so, uh, Linda and Sue started going through the bylaw, um, looking for what we're saying. Amendment, you know, administrative amendments, things that the town clerk, um, has the ability to change such as, um, numbering that could have been off, um, spacing, obvious misspellings, um, punct, not punk, not punctuation, but capitalization or, you know, some things need to be capitalized and they weren't. Or, um, there's one, um, one part where it's the beginning of a sentence that should say the, um, and it says he, um, that's obviously, you know, a, a typo. So the, there's a, a few administrative items which we're currently putting into the current, um, working draft that is going to go to, um, the, we have a publisher who puts it into a actual, um, publication software. Um, so it's not in Word and, um, it's been very complicated over the years, having a lot of different people edit a Word document. But then, uh, Sue and with, uh, Linda's help went through and started looking at what we're calling is it tier, tier one edits, Sue? Uh, or, or housekeeping. Keeping. Housekeeping edits. Where these are. Yeah, we're, we'll call them housekeeping edits where, um, Yeah, we'll call them housekeeping edits where it you know, there, there are edits that we feel that the, the town clerk feels that the attorney general would find that putting a comma in a particular place can change the structure of a sentence and the meaning of a sentence, even though, you know, we know what we want to say. Or adding, you know, adding words for clarifying. An example is like item four, where it just says the Board of Appeals.
This on screen. Are you attempting to share?
Yes.
Yeah.
I did share.
The Attorney General is apparently very hard-nosed about what you've done administratively and what, you know, even an obvious comma. I'm not even sure they'll let us put the T in T H E, but we'll see.
Um, I, I am. But so like item four, adding the word zoning before board, that's under the definition for the zoning board of appeals. So, so and, I mean, Sue is working with Linda and just coming up with a list of housekeeping items. At this point, I will be submitting this rough draft to town council because format of a warrant article matters. So at least, you know, we're getting the format correct as we go down through, you know, through these different lists. Yeah, so that's. Unless you have anything to add to Linda?
No. Well, I will only add that you can expect this housekeeping article to get much longer. This is only housekeeping changes to sections one, two, and the beginning of section three. It's like the first eight pages out of 90 pages of the zoning bylaw. And the idea is to find out is the format correct before going to all the trouble of writing up the whole thing? Because it would be very painful to find out.
Yes.
Oh, had it rewritten. Yeah. And what you heard Elizabeth mentioned tier one, I, I in my head classified things into tier one, things where it's obvious that was what was meant. It's just not what the text says. Tier two, things where it's pretty obvious that it was phrased incorrectly, but we could either phrase it this way or phrase it that way. And you actually have to think about it to decide what to do. And then tier three would be the general business of the planning board in which we consider whether to change, to ask the change, recommend to the town to change the zoning bylaw to do something different. Which would definitely not be under consideration this year, given everything else on our plate, including the big article which we don't even see tonight.
That's all I had.
Okay. And did you want to go through the other potential articles such as the tree bylaw and just so people have those on their list and can be thinking about them? And you sent around in your agenda.
Yeah. So I sent around the agenda memo. And there's the tree preservation bylaw, which I went through. Yep. And then the last one, I think that was it, right?
The two-family dwelling and the
Parking. So we'll start with, so parking, as, as the board knows, your outside consultants doing their study of the zoning bylaw parking requirements. I confirmed this morning that they will have some, another presentation to the board for your meeting on October 10th. So the 10th is going to be a doozy of a meeting. But so I, I imagine that there will probably also be you know, very easy, you know, almost like housekeep, possibly housekeeping items for amendments to more complicated things. So I think the discussion on the 10th would be just deciding which of their recommendations would be, you know, quick, you know, by, you know, warrant articles to present and then spend a little bit more time with some of the more major items that need more public conversation. So that's what I expect with the parking requirements. And then the two-family dwelling, so this this is just putting the idea out there. How many of the things that the planning board, warrant articles that the planning board does? You, you start small and you see if it works, see what the problems are, and then you go from there. A good example is the floor area ratio bylaw started with Residence C and A and moved forward. The same thing with accessory dwelling units. And so with the conversations and the comments that the board has gotten with the MBTA community's discussion, whether the board wants to think about currently two-family dwellings are permitted in the Residence C Zone District by special permit, whether the board wants to consider putting forth a warrant article to expand that to include the Residence B District, which I will have. I am waiting for, to get feedback from the building department on the number of permits that have been issued for two families. I want to say it's, since it's was passed by town meeting, I think it's somewhere around the range of maybe four two-family dwellings, special permits have been issued. So it, you know, again, they're you know, they're it's, it has not been widely used and it may be, you know, Residence C District tends to be the smaller lots. Residence B, they're, you know, a little bit bigger, maybe they can accommodate them more. So that was just put out there as just something for the board to think about. And then the last item is discussion with the board regarding clarification on an amendment to, whether an amendment is needed or clarification is needed to the tree preservation bylaw. Specifically under scope and applicability item four point, I think it's 4.1C. And I would probably, you know, have the board ask questions about that tonight and then maybe have a little bit more in-depth conversation at your second meeting in October and not necessarily try and hash that out because it's, it's the reason for the clarification. You know, unless somebody has questions, it can be kind of, you know, convoluted. The tree bylaw has been somewhat challenging to implement. You know, I think we're finding, you know, after all these years of started finding our way. And but this is, this is definitely something new that has the potential to, you know, raise issues in the past or, you know, raise issues in the future.
So do you want us to ask questions about?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think if board members have questions, you know, about this, or maybe it's not even questions if everybody has, you know, it is the the, the, the current example, the current building commissioner feels that section 4.1C as, as it is written, is that it, it is any structures on the property that get built. So it's not just whether the single-family dwelling is being expanded by 50%. I know the, the, the long history of the tree preservation bylaw and, you know, what was presented at town meeting, but that is not what the language says. So I, you know, I think it's just a conversation is, you know, that the, you know, is, is that interpretation is, you know, is that how to move forward? If that is a good way to move forward, I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or the other. Then nothing needs to happen to, you know, to clarify the bylaw.
So you're saying is, is it just that you want to clarify the bylaw because the current building inspector has a different view of what it says and that we need to clarify that or consistency or it, or that we're still seeing, which I think everybody who walks around sees a lot of clear cutting of trees. And it's like, why, why are all those trees gone now? When there's construction or an addition going on? So, so which I'm not quite sure if you're trying to.
No. So specifically for sections C, you know, the original one impetus for the tree preservation bylaw was, you know, the smaller homes being completely demolished, the whole entire lot being clear cut and, you know, a much larger house being built and and many times that house was larger by more than 50% and they would need a special permit. And, and that's how that section has been interpreted and implemented since, you know, the bylaw was passed and, and it has not been implemented in a way where if you had a house, let's say it's, you know, it's a very small house, but somebody wants to build, you know, a two-car garage that has living space above. You know, the tree preservation bylaw, you know, would not be triggered because how it was being interpreted from the beginning was if you, you were expanding that, the dwelling by more than 50%, not just that any new structure on the property, whether it was the house or an accessory structure caused an expansion by more than 50%. And, and that is the case, you know, that we're dealing with right now. And the building commissioner, you know, as he reads item C, well, that, that really is what it says, construction of one or more structures or addition to structures. So it's not saying construction of a dwelling or an addition to a dwelling, it's structures. So that would be, you know, any, you know, any structure. If somebody wanted to build a barn and it increased by more than 50%, then yes, the tree bylaw would be triggered. That, that is the definitely the more conservative interpretation and, and I, I'm all, I'm all for that interpretation. It's just the building commissioner asked for clarification since the planning board was the one that initiated the bylaw.
Abby, did you have something to say? I thought, oh, no, I thought I saw you raise your hand. I'm with Elizabeth. It seems quite obvious to me that it applies to all structures, but I'm perfectly happy to pursue amending the article to be clear, just to make it easier for people. The simplest thing to do would be to change the language that increases the gross floor area to that increases the aggregate gross floor area. But I mean, it says excluding basements, opener screen, porches and decks. It doesn't exclude garages. I can't imagine why a building inspector interpreted it to exclude garages, but
But it's not, well, it's not, it's not garages. It was just detached structures.
Well, or garages or any detached structures. I, it seems very clear to me what the language says and that was misinterpretation, but I'm not opposed to clarifying the language if that would prevent future problems.
And I don't think it needs clarifying if, you know, it is the consensus of the board that it's, you know, any structures being built where it increases the gross floor area by more than 50%, regardless of whether it's an accessory structure or a single-family dwelling.
Or any other family dwelling, yes.
Or an, yeah, or an additional dwelling or, okay. I'm gonna take silence as consensus.
I think so.
Okay.
Okay. So no one has to volunteer for that?
Nobody has to volunteer for, for, for that. There, there may be as, as the land manager and I finished working through some of the changes to the rules and regs. And there may be housekeeping things, but we're, we're trying not to go that direction. I think the board has enough, enough on its plate.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. So Ben, if we remove that, then I, I think we can see if anyone would like to volunteer for any of the other articles that might come forth?
Well, I of course volunteer for housekeeping corrections, although I might hope that most, if not all of them end up on the consent calendar.
Oh, well, we would all love that to happen, but we will.
You are still required to make a presentation at the public hearing.
And I am still on that. You will prepare your hook to pull me off the, the stage because I go on too long about commas and spelling.
Well, I'm sure the moderator will give you the traditional three minutes.
No, no, so.
The hearing, I can go on.
Oh, at the hearing, the planning board public hearing for the.
Okay. Yes. Well, we, we will, we will definitely let you practice for town meeting, which will give you five minutes. How's that? Okay. Any other?
Any, any thoughts on the two-family amendment?
I'm in favor, except that I wonder, should we extend it to Residence B? Or should we try to make it be by right in Residence C? Probably not both. That might be too much.
I, I think that would be too much.
Yeah, I think we're going to ask for enough by right this, this year.
Good point. And let's go, then I, I agree. You're right.
Okay. Well, so you can volunteer for everything, but.
Oh, I, I didn't volunteer. I just said I.
Okay, that was a clarification.
Also going to have what, parking and other issue, other articles that haven't come before tonight's meeting. So I'm holding off for something else.
All right. Well, if, if, if anyone would like to put their name on something, I think now is a good time to start, but if.
I can do it. That's fine. I don't think I actually did one last year. So I'm, I'm happy to be the first sacrificial lamb.
For two-family or did you have a?
Yeah, two families, fine. But I have no strong feelings one way or the other.
Okay. All right. Anyone else want to jump in or?
Take the floodplain.
Okay.
We can give Mark parking.
I think that's probably a good idea.
Well, unless Abby has an interest, I guess it's coming down to site plan review and parking.
I, I have no special interest in it. I'll just take whatever, whatever is left. You can give me, you can give me whatever you'd like.
Okay. So you're going to do site plan review?
Fantastic.
And Mark will do parking. Oh, I guess I'm left with MBTA. All right. With that, we have the opportunity to review a little bit and get some comments if appropriate. I will try and make this a short meeting, but this is turning the page. I don't, yeah, let's see if we can. So we had a meeting on the 20th.
Just, yeah.
Just.
We, we can't.
I barely slept since then. But it actually, I think was a great meeting. We had a lot of constructive comments. And I think there are a few people who participated in that meeting still left, but maybe they're on their way out.
How to make this full screen from here? So if you want to just stop for a second, I'll, I'll bring it up by email. I'll bring it up by email
Have a stretch break for anyone out there?
I'm taking mine
That looks like you did it Okay, so um I'm gonna ask I'll just say next page um So I thought we'd start with what I thought the results were and then I I but I don't I wanna hear what everyone else took away from the meeting as well, but this is what I thought I was able to make out make from the meeting um the first thing I thought that was positive um from the consultant was that um you know it was really the first time we had the GIS um data that told us we could comply with the requirements to establish zoning for the transit oriented multifamily housing by right um that we could achieve that using um primarily the existing residential zoning standards um that would be underlying the overlay districts um and that in that way we would be able to achieve to some extent a more moderate transition uh to greater density and multifamily housing in the in the transit areas that um the town has expressed a desire for parity between our two commuter rail stations and if that is the goal then there may be some differing densities required between the transit areas and that we may need additional overlay districts outside of the half mile radius of the stations I also thought that the consultant um introduced two topics that are important, one is parking requirements and that they should be considered um perhaps loosening them from our two units um per dwelling or two parking spaces per dwelling unit so that we can support our interest in open space and sustainability and also potentially reduce traffic and that the conclusion I thought the consultant has was that mixed use incentives don't provide us a lot in terms of additional unit capacity but they do add risk in terms of preserving our commercial areas and then I tried to though my skills with um uh word tables and PowerPoint presentations was not the best but but this was a first shot at what people asked for which was a comparative scenario one, two, and three and scenario one really had a mixture of residential and mixed use um I thought what that scenario showed that we when testing and testing is in the bottom, we had no problem testing for um acreage requirements, capacity requirements, uh density or units per acre requirement amount of land within the station area and the unit capacity though that didn't somehow come out on this table but what it did show was that the mixed use didn't really add that much um and then that pushed us into scenario two which was really just the area of the two stations and once again um based on the minimum requirements if we just look at um can we get all of our requirements met within the two station areas the half mile around the two station areas that we have no problems um and that is again using the same assumptions of our existing um underlying zoning requirements um without any changes in parking so again, I think this reinforces the assumption that we can um achieve compliance what it doesn't achieve though is the issue of parity because there's as you see both in scenario one and scenario two, there's a a heavy reliance on West Concord and um particularly in using um I assume that the Baker Avenue and um also um Junction Village sites to support a lot of that housing so scenario three then moved on to challenge that assumption and say how can we um get um a reduction in the reliance on West Concord and there the um I think maybe it was random uh choices that this um you know chosen from where people put their pins um cuz there were a lot of areas where pins went but this um consultant chose the Elm Street area two twenty-nine Main Street and Nathan Pratt and then also the Barrett's Mill Road area and in terms of doing their calculations they um we still had excessive amounts of acreage capacity um acceptable levels of density certainly by doing that and then we then were um reducing the percent area within the stations but we still really didn't resolve fully um the balance between West Concord and Concord Center so that's where we were left with the consultant's scenarios then in terms of our discussion of um what we uh what we heard on uh last Wednesday was people truly want parity between Concord and West Concord and so I have some tables, these first um couple show a couple of things and I'm gonna go through them a little bit more as we have um the tables compared but we see data from um Mouse Mass Housing Partnership on the half half mile circles um for Concord and West Concord and I think the thing to notice is that um the density of both our areas Concord or West Concord relative to the mass of all station areas that are included in the MBTA program is we have a very very low density um so we really um unfortunately have to focus on that um relative to our our built universe as it is right now so if we page through and just go to the tables when they're compared one to the next, I think that should be maybe next um Concord Center and West Concord really are are very similar today um in terms of Concord Center, um we have five hundred units of residential housing out of nine hundred um on two hundred acres West Concord has a more even split between condominiums and single family units um they have slightly greater density um both between single family and condominium Concord has a hundred condominiums, West Concord almost four hundred and but they have fewer single family homes it's uncanny, both groups have apartments over eight units of about the same amount, a hundred um two family um is less predominant in Concord Center more two family has been taken advantage or uh opportunities have been created in West Concord apartments with four to eight units are equally the same um you see a little difference um in Concord uh center has a hundred and twenty-three units of housing authority properties whereas West Concord has boarding houses and congregate housing of about the same amount eighty-four, I don't know what that
Six for housing
And an additional six for housing authority so it it despite our very pronounced belief that Concord Center and West Concord are so very different a lot of these numbers don't totally support that, there are differences but um but I think that's also why people wanna keep parity you know, they don't wanna see great differences occur and I think most people in Concord love both Concord Center and West Concord so that the next thing we heard or at least I heard at the meeting was that then people wanted also to make sure there was some parity in the execution of this program between multifamily housing that's zone for in the town centers and that's zone for in areas outside of the town centers, I mean we only have to have fifty percent within the half mile radius of the um stations and I think even though we saw a tremendous amount of pins in that half hour half mile radius there was some pushback I felt at the meeting about having areas outside of town center so I just looked at a couple from where there were pins and where the consultant didn't look but there's many of those and I think that that's probably maybe something that's been part of the next step, this was an example, Virginia Road and Dunbar Way um had pins in them and looked to me when I superficially looked at it like something we could consider um next um was um the Prescott and um people had a lot of pins on twenty-two twenty-nine, I don't know that that's something where we're really gonna see multifamily residential housing by right um the town has a whole other discussion about that area but there was Nathan Pratt's there and there's also a possibility of um three seventy-five Forest Ridge Road which is the Thoreau Club, I mean that that also could be uh an area that wasn't considered and then um I think uh there were a few pins dropped at Barrett's Mill Road but even further back, there's quite a bit of condominiums on the Black Horse Place and that wasn't observed either so I think that um right now um just to sort of again come back to summarizing some of this um there's the question of parity, I think the next thing to talk about are the dimensional requirements um and I felt there that height setback and frontage people were very comfortable with parking, I think there's um a lot of quest you know some interest in perhaps changing that um but people want a gradual increase in density uh throughout town and then the density examples are the examples we've been showing and if you take a look um the units per acre all will to some extent potentially off you know could offset lower density in some of the residential areas around the train stations um but these are not um figures that people are uncomfortable with throughout town and and they've been seeing this through many of our presentations um and then the the last issue really is that of mass and I think there was uh commentary that multifamily, large multifamily buildings across Baker Avenue is not something people are looking for, then the Novo um Riverside unit seems to be well accepted by many people but I think people are not looking to take that entire commercial area and turn it into high density residential um and I'm saying that even though on the next slide uh show that there are an awful lot of pins there and then finally um just to summarize um where I started with um is to say that the last thing is that um mixed use um is desired by a lot of people but it's very confusing and I think um the the more I listen to it, the more I think people perceive that it the MBTA is not the way to get mixed use um so that means that the planning board can live for another day perhaps our work will not be done and that incentives for development can be confusing and uh might be difficult to achieve as well so that is what I heard um and then in terms of next steps, um I am excited that the staff is gonna train to do our own GIS testing and I think that that will lay the groundwork for the planning board to be able to review um some professionally designed overlay districts that um our planning division can come up with um and that we can um move on, I think with um uh a good base of having had a lot of uh input from the community and I think um now some additional feedback in terms of um styles we can look for um and then the last element is affordability options and that will be another consultant if they can get the consulting there um I I think um Lexington um had a consultant that gave a a positive read back readout for them um and what they did with their zoning was include a variety of options of affordability in the zoning based on what was accepted by the state in terms of the um requirement for that independent analysis so I think we can zone even without knowing what that result is if that makes any sense, we we can put in options based on what the state will allow so that that's my two cents and I am eager for um any planning board members who think I missed it or think that they have heard other things or wanna add to to this and um yeah
I um I I usually don't jump ahead before board members but I I'm just gonna jump ahead on a couple of things
Good
um and I'm gonna go back to um so um so Black Horse Place, um that is a planned residential special permit uh so um so that would not be appropriate to include um its density is fixed, it is also on a onsite sewage disposal system um through a groundwater um discharge permit with the state and that density was um fixed for these houses because it gave all of um the
Right
um protected open space um which if nobody has walked that trail, I highly recommend it cuz it's um there's basically a gorge in there and it's it's just amazing um additionally, the the same thing is with um these units of housing down here um I believe um most of those were also done by a comprehensive permit uh so those could not uh be included as well um and I wanted to echo um Linda's comment about um including twenty-two twenty-nine Main Street and whether that should be included or not at this stage since the town really has not had um you know is not to the point of having you know, a significant community discussion about um you know what is going to be the ultimate disposition of that property and how's it gonna be used and you know, is you know by right multifamily going to be you know that use, is it gonna be you know municipal, is it gonna be, is the town even gonna own it, um is the town, how is the town gonna control it and um so um that's a question, um I And um so um that's a question. Um I uh when we talk about and at the community meeting, talking about the parity and um not increasing um you know, significantly increasing the traffic within West Concord, um I think um for Nathan Pratt, um I think that can be a specific sub-district based on, you know, there's three hundred and fifty units there. Um and it it's still up to up in the air whether the state is going to allow communities to take credit um for those areas or or not, but um you know, it can be included in the state, you know. If it passes town meeting, um and the state shoots it down. You know, that's, you know, that's fine, so long as um you know, it doesn't throw us out of compliance. So I think that site can be included and not con- included based on the conversations for the other areas. Um and I think um um Dunbar Way and off Virginia Road, I also think was um a comprehensive permit. Um but I would have to look into how that development got um created um and whether uh this space down here is um you know, is eligible for development. So um that's that I just wanted to point out. Um I do think one of the scenarios uh that can be run is um taking Novo Riverside Commons, um having a sub-district that's twenty units per acre, five stories, uh and uh take the credit for uh that site. Um and put that into the calculation. And then to echo what um Linda's comment on the parking, um there seemed to be um some interest in looking at doing uh one space for studio and one-bedroom apartments, one and a half spaces for two bedrooms and two spaces for three or more for the units within the half-mile radius. Uh and that, once I, once I learned how to do the compliance model with our GIS team, um that type of change in the language of the zoning uh can also be done.
Okay. In with some comments?
Yes, please.
Well, first of all, Linda, that was a tour de force. No wonder you haven't slept with all of information and analysis, especially the side-by-side analysis between Concord Center and West Concord. My goodness. Amazing. I Elizabeth, correct me if I am wrong, didn't the consultant make a mistake with Junction Village? It is required to be one hundred percent affordable, and therefore there is no way we could possibly include it in the overlay district, correct?
Uh why? The requirement is um fifteen units per acre and
But a maximum of ten percent affordable unless we get an economic analysis. And I'm guessing an economic analysis would not bless one hundred percent affordable.
Um I think the economic analysis would have to take into consideration the carrying cost for that property for the Concord Housing Development Corporation. Um you know, you know, they did not have to purchase that property for fair market, you know, value. Um so I that that's gonna be a question um for the economic feasibility analysis um for the question, but um for the consultant, but yes, definitely good question.
Okay, all right. So that's unclear, but uh but we'll see about that. There is one thing. Uh one major thing I thought you overlooked, Linda, which I recall um from the forum, which is that quite a few speakers spoke strongly in favor of allowing slightly greater density in what is currently single-family housing in within the half-mile districts. Because so uh allowing three or is it four-family housing units by right in residency and possibly some bits of residence B within a half mile of the station on the grounds of on the one hand, the desperate need for housing, which we all know about for people to downsize in and and workers and people's kids to live in. And on the other hand, the large number of seniors who are living, living in houses that are too large for them, but they can't afford to leave and go elsewhere that is anywhere near their longtime homes here in Concord. So that on the one hand, you know, um perhaps in some areas, fifteen units per acre might be too much uh according to the uh too big a ra- rise in density uh immediately, but we can have greater density in one area and lesser density in another area, we could allow uh um. I think it calls for us to have a fourth scenario. It doesn't seem like uh scenario one seems to be not well like not not very good for any reason, but I think we need a scenario four that would lay out what it would look like to allow higher density in some actual residential areas. Another benefit that people pointed out is that would solve the problem of parity between Concord Center and West Concord almost at a stroke, maybe not a hundred percent. Um but to very large degree. So I hate to say it, I almost think if we did, if we did that, we'd have to publicize it well, and I know how much work these things are, so I shudder to think, but we might even need another public forum.
So I I'm sorry, so is is your thought to um ha- have a scenario that was by right three-family in all of the residential districts within the half-mile of Concord Center or?
Oh, um well, I was suggesting both uh Concord.
Both districts, okay.
But not maybe, so as to whether it would be in their entirety, maybe uh.
I think, I think if you did it in their entirety, um you, it'd be hard to get enough to to that fifteen-units density. I mean, that's a hu- huge area. So you would need some offsetting very um substantial density. So you don't need you don't need all the areas. You might even just need one large neighborhood in each or one large neighborhood in Concord Center um offset by uh a higher density somewhere around Baker Ave. And that that probably would be a fulfill a scenario four.
Yeah, I really don't have a good sense um without having looked at any compliance model calculations for how much area would be required at three units per acre or four units per acre. But I really think that it behooves us to pres- to come up with such a scenario because I would hardly say that everyone was in favor of that, but there were substant- enough voices in favor of that that we should produce such a model to see what people think. I had um.
I have a meeting with our GIS program manager tomorrow, um because there's definitely gonna have to be some uh coordination between his team and um all the other things that we're all juggling to be able to um do this compliance modeling in a timeframe that is helpful for the board to move forward um in the next five meetings. Which I think you are gonna have to have another meeting in no- in December. You only have one scheduled for right now, so I'm I'm trying, but I I just, I don't see it happening in five minute, five meetings, so.
Okay.
Okay, we're all the time. Um I must have overlooked the comments about parity between the half-mile radius and abside. Well, I guess I did hear that some. Um oh, I did notice the division in comments between people who would like to rezone in a way to prevent housing from being built but satisfy the requirement in order to maintain the town as it currently is. And people who would like to provide more housing, more diverse housing options and rezoning Prescott, because it's it's not just that it's at the edge of town and would be a traffic issue and is not near town services. It's also that it's new building, so nothing would happen there. It would, as you said, Elizabeth, be a way to claim credit without actually building housing. And if that is the will of the voters of the town, then that's where we will end up perhaps, but um.
I I just, I'm I'm um reluctant to um have the compliance model rely
Yeah.
on that area to to meet the requirements because uh it could go through town meeting, pass town meeting, approved by the Attorney General and then get to the state and um they could you know, um not find that in compliance. Uh and then, you know, the town would ultimately then find themselves not in compliance.
And then we would open to god knows what because.
Uh so I'm I'm just, I'm I'm reluctant to have that area um be part of having to meet all of the requirements in case it the state does uh not allow it.
Right. Um and on building height, I thought that there was a little bit of wiggle room. I actually I thought it was a little bit confusing. Pretty much everybody seemed comfortable with three stories or thirty-five feet because it's what we have now. Some, there seemed to be a certain ground swell of interest in greater height, provided that it was used to trade off for more green space. But um we may just have too much on our plate to look at that as an additional modeling element. Still, I, it was the last thing that I noticed that um I thought was a little less clear-cut. I thought it was a good forum. I thought we got a lot of uh interesting comments of every kind from the public.
Do have something, it might be kind of going a little sideways on it, but with with all these different models, have we looked at wh- how much population we're looking at adding to the town? Like how many more people, like the stresses on services, especially the sewage systems typically. It's one of those things I've seen time and time again. I worked, built sewage plants and the towns have not looked at, hey, what the impact is of the growth, and then all of a sudden there's their their system stressed and then their plant is under, you know,
Yeah.
undersized for the capacity, you know.
Yeah, so uh I mean, the the issue is that um you know, the state's only requiring communities to adopt zoning, which is just the rules. Um and you know, not requiring that anything be built.
Hmm.
Um so and any um so I did want to um um tell the board, one of the other pieces of the zoning um bylaw is, um I think it it's all the members are in support of having the bylaw require site plan review, you know, for any of these multifamily projects. Um so those projects will still have to go through that review and will still have to in- address impacts. And they will, they will, there will still have to be sewer capacity for something to get built. So it's um but it's, there's, there's no way to um to go through and do that type of um you know, analysis because we don't know what those projects are gonna be. Um you know, we, you know, we don't know um uh you know, take um what's one of, one of the sites. Um take uh one of the properties on Baker Ave, not three hundred, but where um the church is. Um you know, we, we don't know, somebody could come in there and and propose you know, just a cottage community and it could only add fifty people or, you know, something like, you know, Novo and three stories and you know, small, you know, studio and one bedrooms. And you know, that could add, you know, two hundred people. And so until you have an actual project, there's, there's no way to do that type of, you know, fiscal impact on zoning. It's um, you know, it's just, it's 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 not feasible. You, the only way you could do that would be, you know, fiscal impact on um worst, you know, basically worse, not worst-case scenarios, but a, you know, a scenario that doesn't take into, you know, considerations of um, you know, how uh the the footprint of the building and and where, how the parking's gonna get laid out or um, you know, where drive aisles are and where's the trash gonna be? And there are so many things that go into site plan. The, you know, you could only do an analysis based on, here's the square footage, fifteen unit, you know, of the lot, fifteen units per acre, you know, here's your parking and and that's it. But that, that's not a realistic, you know, any type of realistic evaluation of impacts. Um so it's um it's, it's a little bit, you know, it it it's kind of hard, I mean, because, you know, everybody is concerned about those impacts, but um you know, zoning just lays the rules and somebody has to come in and actually propose a project. And you have to know, you know, how many units, how many bedrooms, um what amenities are they proposing, gonna propose on the site? And um so that's, you know, that's kind of the challenge.
I have a question, um when you said site plan review, and I thought, well, what if we took a swath of um twenty acres in Concord Center? Um and so say there's eighty dwelling units currently there, but we're gonna zone that for three-unit homes. Same setbacks, same height requirements. So it's just like you took a three-story house and chopped it in three kind of and had three units, right? And you, instead of two parking spaces for a single-family home, you have three for, you know, those one-bedroom units or whatever. Um would each of those um uh properties have to have site plan review? Would they all come to?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Full employment opportunity for the planning board.
I just thinking. Yeah, I mean, I I I again.
They're not gonna happen overnight.
You're kind of, you know, nobody has thought about the, you know, the unfunded mandate aspect of zoning and um it's like the tree preservation bylaw. Um you know, intent, you know, fantastic intent and and let's pass that bylaw. Um it it has been, you know, a very challenging and a significant amount of time implementing, you know, and interpreting and implementing that bylaw. Um site plan review is, you know, is is no different. You know, I'm I'm hopeful for that type of situation. You know, you're talking about, you know, uh an expedited, you know, somewhat expedited process um where, you know, different departments establish requirements, you know, should this pass upfront, you know, the fight, you know, if you're gonna take your house and turn it into a three-family, um you know, you need to have two means of egress, you need, the fire department's gonna want this. Water and sewer um has has already established um design guidelines, you know, because of the ADUs. Um but you know, there, it's gonna be, you know, this and um so to make things a little bit more um, you know, streamlined, but you're still talking legal notice in the paper, notification to a butters, public hearing with the planning board. Um you know, uh you know, is somebody in the planning division gonna be writing a staff report for every one of these? Um I I haven't even grasped, you know, I haven't even grasped that yet, so um you know, kind of don't don't think too far ahead, let's, you know, when it, when it passes then, but um e- so even even so though, you know, we start doing our budgeting for next year, we start now. Um I I don't.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah.
Too far off.
Yeah, and and we've.
Um if I understand this correctly, if we were to approve this overlay district and a developer comes in and wants to build so many houses in a certain space, and yet we either don't have the sewer hookup of capacity or there's not enough land there to build an onsite septic, that means that couldn't be built. Am I understanding this correctly?
Correct.
So it's not like we're mandating any, we're not saying you have to improve your sewer capacity, so we might elect to, we might want. That's what I'm saying. It's it's not, not a, hey, we're gonna have to do this, but it's it's a, it's a potential and it's a big uh you know, especially, I don't know how old the plant is, just, it's just something I've had experience with. Depending on when you do it, there's a lot of the requirements, but moving so much over the past twenty years on them. So that's what. So that's what, it's just, we've had, you know, we have the schools being built now. We don't want to have, run the risk of having the firm finance a new plant.
We might, we might have to, but not because of this.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Um, more comments from the planning board? And then we'll take public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, let's take, uh, the Zoom, Sven.
Yeah, thank you. Sven Weaver fifty burn up, um, also serving on the Public Works Commission. So on a, on a sewer side, um. We still have some reserves, but, um, we are limited by state, um, to, to a certain capacity. So, um, as long as the state will not lift, um, or give us more capacity. Uh, for, um, water sewer, um, then, uh, we will run at a certain point into limitations. Um, I think, um, there are, there are some activities, um, trying to get this, um. Lifted or increased, but we don't know the timing on this. So, um, we might end up depending on what kind of speed this, this thing would suddenly develop. I don't think it will, we will have suddenly within a very short time period, a lot of new. Units built, but if that would happen, we would probably run sooner or later. Uh, to the limits, um, that the state, um, gives us anyway. So just keep that in mind.
But it, just following up on your comment, if you, um, had an existing. Property in Concord Center that had a, um. I don't know, uh, three thou- three thousand square foot home on it. And you allowed that by right to become a three-story building. Um, with, with three dwelling units. Of a, say they were a thousand units, a thousand square feet each. Um, would there be a difference in the sewer capacity? Or you're just really just replacing a one-family, single-family home with multifamily unit? And so that would actually be, that be a net neutral?
Well, in, in the end, it's measured against kind of million, million gallons per month or per quarter, depending on how you look at this. So you, you're just looking at the amount of water that is going through the sewer system. And that is, and how many people are there and how often do they go to the toilet? Just, um, make it very, very simple here. Um, though we have a limitation on how many million gallons, uh, we can put through, uh, the system in a certain time period.
Correct, but Mr. Weber, in terms of permitting, do we, it does, does the permitting for three? One thousand square foot units. Require a greater number of gallons per day to be permitted because they, there are three kitchens in addition to.
No, 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 no. I'm telling, the answer is, is no. Um, sewer, the sewer, um. Um, flow for a building is calculated using Title V requirements and it's based on the number of bedrooms. Um, they count all of the rooms in the, in, in a building. And, um, divide by two and that's how many rooms you have. It's a hundred and ten gallons per day per room. So if somebody were just to take a three thousand square foot home, divide it up into. Um, three one thousand square foot dwellings, the number of rooms would not change. And the sewer flow calculated for that structure would not change.
It's number of bedrooms.
Yes, it's number, well, it's number, they take the total number of rooms, divide it by half. That's the number of rooms that you calculate at a hundred and ten gallons per day per bedroom. Um, so that's, so it's, um. But if somebody had a very small, single-family dwelling, did a large addition to create a three-family. Yes, that, that is definitely, uh, an increase in the sewer sewage flow from that structure. And that's all I know about Title V.
We'll take a question in the room. Did you have a?
Comment. Number one, I thought the presentation, I thought it did a great job of capturing what I heard, um, that night. And so I was one of the people that was asking about mixed use and I had an email exchange with Sue Felchin and I also spoke with Mimi Graney. And I understand that mixed use, um, has a risk of obliterating our commercial base. So I'm, I'm on, I'm on board with that now. I would just ask you to think again about two-two-two-nine Main Street. Because at first, when we brought this up, I thought, oh no, we shouldn't think about that because nobody owns that, okay? But whether we own it or not, we control it through zoning. It's still within the boundaries of Concord. So we control all the property within the boundaries of Concord through zoning. And all we're doing now is talking about a zoning change. So, uh, I'm not sure I would take two-two-two-nine off the, off of your consideration because we don't own it yet. Because we can still control, whether we own it or we, uh, have someone else own it, we will control, control it through zoning. It might not be a place where we want to have this, but, um, I wouldn't take that off the, the, um, the plate yet. Um, and then my last comment is I agree with Sue that, um, bringing in more. Um, single-family units in Concord Center and allowing three or four is, is, is a consideration. Thank you.
Let's go to Zoom, um, Sandy. Your hand up?
Yes, uh, good evening, Sandy Smith, twenty-five Academy Lane. Um, I have a question that, uh, uh, picks up on the comment that Sue and, uh, Mary made about the. Uh, single-family lots in Concord Center. Um, and links it back to a comment that I think I heard at the meeting last week. For the first time, which was that these, um, sub-districts, if you want to think about them that way. Um, need to be five acres in total, five acres of continu- contiguous lots. Uh, and. I'm, I'm not entirely sure exactly how contiguous is defined, whether there can be a public way, for example. In between, uh, uh, two, two areas. Because I think it would be hard in Concord Center to find an area that you could zone. Uh, for three units per lot, for example, uh, and have, and have five acres without crossing a street.
Um, I believe the, um, if, um. You, you can have something, you know, directly across a street. Um, you would, you would not be able to have, you know, one parcel here and then, you know, cross a street. And, and diagonally way over here have another. But they do, um, consider like directly across from each other from a, on a public way or, or street as contiguous.
And, and, uh, Elizabeth, would that include going across the MBTA right away or the MBTA, uh, property?
I know the answer has been given about public roads. I'm, I'm not sure, um, if there's been an answer. I will have to ask about, um, how they consider. I, I, I think the answer is going to be the same, but I will check.
Okay, great. I'd, I'd be interested in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I think, I can't quite see Victoria. Um, would you like to ask a question or make a comment?
Yes, thank you so much. Victoria Klimkwood, seven Nimrod Drive. I had a question, when it comes to the communities and maybe I'm just not educated enough. Are there restrictions on the residents of these multifamily or these high-density type properties? Um, or, um, can you put restrictions, like do a, you know. I know there's a lot of talk about the aging communities not being able to afford to live, you know, and pay the increased taxes. Could you make these higher-density communities satisfy the requirements? If you put an age restriction in the, on them or no?
Um, you, you, no, you specifically cannot. Through the zoning, you cannot put that type of restriction on. It, it doesn't preclude, um, and again, this is to, um, Rob's question, when you talk about impacts. It doesn't preclude, um, somebody coming in and on their own proposing that it be age restriction, age restricted. They, they can do that as part of their own project. It's their project, it's their property. But in the zoning, no, you would not be able to, um, to put that type of restriction on.
And then the follow-up is when we're looking at high-density areas, um, and, you know, maybe. Looking at where that concentration is from a resource perspective. Has any analysis been done on the zoning of the elementary schools and the impact on the schools themselves? Um, maybe spreading out some of these developments amongst the schools. So they're not concentrated and putting, um, pressure on one school in particular. Or rethinking the redis- like, you know, looking at the districts of those schools.
Um, so, um, a- again, cause, you know, just, um, if, should the zoning change or, you know, the zoning pass. Um, it, it's just allowing the rules. We, we, we don't, we wouldn't know what type of projects. Or would be proposed or where they would be built. So I, I think, um, so you wouldn't be able to do that type of impact analysis. And, you know, I, you, you might, you know, who, who's to say somebody doesn't propose a project where it's studios? And, um, you know, there's usually not a high number of children living in, you know, in studio apartments. Um, it, so until, until an actual project gets proposed, you wouldn't be able to do that type of impact analysis. Um, you know, I, so I, I'm. Um, I know it's, it's, uh, you know, it's definitely, you know, a concern, but, you know, you talk about, like, um. Nathan Pratt at the Prescott, there's three hundred and fifty units. Um, and there's approximately a hundred children that come out of that project spread out through K through twelve. Um, so, uh, you know, the, 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 there is an impact, but. Um, I, I think it's a, it's perspective. And, you know, a hundred children spread out through K through twelve for a project of that size. Yeah, I, I mean, I, you, you wouldn't be able to do it unless you actually had a proposed project.
And the proposed, uh, Novo project right now, uh, have they been, has the developer been? Been requested to do an impact analysis on school resources?
Um, no, and the developer, um, that is a completely different type of project under the comprehensive permit. Um, and the zoning board of appeals, um, will not be, um, requesting that type of. I don't believe it's within their jurisdiction to be able to make that type of request.
Thank you.
Um, Sven, do you have an additional question?
Yes, I have. Uh, Sven Weaver fifty burn up, uh, speaking, um, on my own, not. Not with my head as Public Works Commissioner. I, I would just want to highlight that the impact on schools, um, uh, is often over, um, estimated. Concord is losing about five percent students per year, um, over the last years. Um, that is about a hundred per year, uh, across all school segments. So if, if you're adding kind of fifty to a hundred per year back in by large projects, like just mentioned by Elizabeth's use. You're still just netting zero. Um, and, uh, we better, we better get more students and more kids, um, into Concord, um, to fill the. The, the, hopefully soon to be finished, brand-new middle school. Uh, and not running into deficits, uh, because we're losing five percent of, uh, students per year. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, well, um. I think it's.
We have a lot of work.
A lot of work, um, but, uh, this has been a good, uh, good discussion today. I want to thank everyone for joining us and, um, we will be meeting. Uh, the tenth of October on a virtual basis. Um, so that will allow you to get lots of cups of coffee that evening to, uh, get through the night. So hopefully, I think it's time that we wrap up now and, uh, and we'll call the meeting over. Again, thank everyone for joining us.
Thank you.